Alderman Yulidol.
Motion to approve bill number twenty-nine fifty-two dash twenty-two, read adopt the code of ethics, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman. Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Russell.
Aye.
Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Alderman Kabelski.
Aye.
Five zero.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance amending chapter one thirty-five of the code of ordinances.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number nine. Alderman Hartman.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for bill number twenty-nine fifty-three dash twenty-two, term of office of mayor and alderman, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just real quick that that we discussed earlier in the work session that with the term of office extension based on on council's feedback, we were not able to do a a term limit, correct?
That is correct, Alderman. As we had our city attorney researched, and there is not statutory authority for a city of our size to go to the voters for a term limit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Russell.
No.
Alderman Atkins.
Aye.
Alderman Hartman.
Aye.
Alderman Kabelski. Alderman Yulidol.
Aye.
Four one.
Motion carries. Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Smithville, Missouri, increasing the term of office for said mayor and Board of Aldermen from two years to four years, and calling for the question regarding the length of the term of office for the mayor and for the Board of Aldermen to be placed on the November eighth, twenty-twenty-two election ballot.
Thank you. That was a short one. Next item on the agenda is number ten. A motion to approve, item number ten.
Mayor.
Alderman Hartman.
I'd like to make a motion, Mayor, for bill number twenty-nine fifty-four dash twenty-two, conditional use permit, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, we have public comment, we have twelve, is my current count, okay. I will call them in the order where they were received. Hopefully Linda got those correct, because that's what the numbers say, and I don't know if somebody tried to shuffle the deck on you. I don't know what's going on here. So she's got numbers on them, so I'll call in the order that we've gotten here. You have three minutes. Play, please state your name and address for the record. First up is James Alsbury.
Okay, James Alsbury, nine oh two Northeast one hundred and eightieth Street. I'm here to oppose the cell phone tower, and what I want to talk about is the finding of facts. Number three, it mentions the Monopole has limited visual impact of any adjacent property. The planning commission added an amendment that the pole must look like a tree. I don't know if that's still required. Also, from address eight oh eight, nine oh two, nine oh six, you can clearly see that you will clearly be able to see the fencing and the one hundred and fifty-foot tower. How is that limited impact to adjacent properties? The next is the adequate access road and entrance are provided. The planning commission had mentioned or added that the driveway entrance must meet current standard codes. Is that still required? Also, this has been a shared driveway since the house was built in nineteen ninety-two. This is a never narrow gravel driveway. After you top the entrance part, the entrance part is wider than the rest. After you top it, the average width is eight foot. Some areas is less than eight foot, actually seven and a half feet. Even the Tillman proposed access road off of the driveway is twelve foot wide. Everything, all research that I have found said access road should be twelve foot wide. The trucks, trailers, semi-trucks, the concrete trucks, the wheelbase are eight foot six inch wide. These trailers can weigh anywhere from seventy thousand to ninety thousand pounds that are going to be coming up this road. This is not a city road. This is a private drive gravel where kids and pets play near the, near the driveway. This is considered a major safety issue. Also, what happens when I pull up my drive, the driveway, and before I top the hill, a, a truck or a construction truck comes over the other side? It's not wide enough to go around. So does that mean I have to back out of my own driveway onto a busy one hundred and eightyth street backwards to let them out? That's totally unsafe. Also, I know that the Tillman group sent in three things from agents slash saying that it doesn't affect value. I'm a co-owner of a home inspection company. We inspect over six thousand homes every year in the Kansas City market. Since our meeting in June, I have asked an average of six agents every single week, telling them the situation, showing them the pictures of my yard. Every single one of them said, yes, it will affect the buyers that want to buy your property. Yes, it can appraise. Appraisals have nothing to do with it. Appraisals is a number-driven thing. But if you limit your buyers, you limit the money you're going to make, and I guarantee you it's going to limit it. Because when you look out of these three addresses, at any point, my fence line, my back fence line is only two hundred feet from that pole. My house is six hundred feet. The neighbors is four hundred feet. We all see the whole thing. There are no trees on the property that will be blocking where they're wanting to put this tower. The only trees are in our own yard and in the adjacent properties. So I want you to consider that when you take your vote. Thanks.
Right on time. Next, Don Kramer.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. I'm here today as a
State your name and address.
I'm sorry, Don Kramer, nine oh five Bainbridge Road. And we also have a property on one hundred North Mill Street that we're turning into a business. As a Kansas City Police Commissioner, I am looking forward to retiring in Smithville and having our dream home, which my husband and I are considering, which butts up our property, butts up against Mr. Biggs' property. We would like to build a two million dollar home plus there, which would help the property values. And now that I hear this tower is going in, the whole reason to wanting to be there is because it has the most gorgeous sunsets. And after hearing this, I'm very concerned, one, that the property values will decrease, which we know that's a fact. In California, they're proving that by twenty percent average, but also the radiation, our views. And I think that the board needs to consider a more appropriate place where instead of it just benefiting one person, it could benefit the city. I've talked to many other cities, and they do them on top of water towers. The cell company has said that they would prefer to be south of there. There's a beautiful water tower south of there. Maybe we can consider that. I'm looking at bringing up property values, not bringing them down. If this goes in, I can guarantee you we will not build here. And I love Smithville. That's my dream property. So I hope you guys consider that today. I did have a couple of questions on that. And again, you know, security fence, that's a concern, kids climbing it, ice falling. Are they going to do anything to stop that? But most of all, what it will do to the property values and the neighbors in the area, if you guys allow this one, what are you saying to everybody else out there? And you're setting that precedence for other neighborhoods. And that's something you need to consider because people talk about that, and this is a great city. I want to see it continue to move forward, not backwards. And by putting this in a community, I think you're hurting it, and it's going to backfire on you guys. I think if you do it in a more rural area, and the city collects the money on it, instead of a property owner, would be a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Ted Lake.
Good evening, everyone. To start with, I've got two questions.
Please state your name and address for the
Ted Lake, five hundred Northeast one hundred and eightyth Street. Okay, the first question is, do any of you own property close to this tower? And the second question I have, which I don't know the answer to, does the city generate any revenue off of this? I don't know the answer to that. But any case, if the city makes money, and he makes money, and everybody else is going to lose money on their property, which has been proven, how come it's fair for one or two people to make money, and everybody else that's close to this tower to lose money? My suggestion would be, just like you said, put it on the water tower. You guys already own the property. You already have the easements, everything else, and it doesn't affect anybody except for the city. Thank you.
Stacy Linden Smith.
Hi, thank you. My name is Stacy Linden Smith. I'm at five hundred Northeast one hundred and eightieth Street, and I'm here to oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Marriott.
Good evening. My name is Robert Marriott, one eight two one two Marcus Road, Smithville. Been a Smithville resident and a part of the community since nineteen ninety-six. I am also here to oppose the tower. As already been mentioned, one, I think that it's going to be a complete eyesore. It changes the whole dynamics of that area. It seems like there are other options that would be more feasible. I also am concerned about property values and concerned about health. Depending on what you read, there's conflicting reports on, on what they say, and I don't, I'm not sure we really know the outcome regarding that. But I am opposed to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Gabe Greider.
All right, Gabe Greider, eight zero eight Northeast one hundred and eightyth Street. Like to point out, the, there's an existing tower on this property. From the information that I've found, it's ninety-eight feet tall. This proposed tower, along with the existing tower, will violate the separation language in the code that states that two towers over ninety feet in height shall not be located within one quarter of a mile from each other. As the previous people have stated, there's more suitable sites for this. There's a property impact study that's been added to this after the plan zoning committee meetings. There's inaccurate information in that. In the original one, there is also inaccurate information. It shows the existing tower being the same height as the proposed tower. The proposed tower is a hundred and fifty feet. Those photos are misleading. In the latest property impact study, the information on page ten and eleven about the existing tower is wrong. Photos on page fifteen are not labeled accurately. Two of the photos are mislabeled. One is labeled as the site where it's going to be built. That's inaccurate. One photo says it's looking west when it's actually looking east. If they can't get this information right, what else are they not telling us? In your code, it says encourages location of towers in non-residential areas. If you look at aerial view of this area, I realize this property is zone ag, but the surrounding neighborhood is residential. Says to encourage strongly the joint use of new and existing tower sites. No survey has been shown of existing capacity on other towers. Just looking at them, it doesn't look like there's very many radios on those towers, one of which is over three hundred feet tall. It's two miles, just under three miles to the west. There's another tower that two miles to the north. Like I say, not very many radios on those towers. His existing tower, you can see it as far away from the dog park. This tower will be fifty feet higher. In Mr. Irwin's testimony in the playing zoning committee meeting, he testified that they would like this to be two hundred feet tall, not the hundred and fifty feet tall in the proposal. He also testified that they would like to be further south in that meeting. To me, that tells me like if you're willing to accept one hundred and fifty foot tall, that would be like equivalent to allowing a development and saying, well, we need an eight-inch sewer, but we're just going to put a four-inch sewer. We'll make that work. So I encourage you to not support this and deny the permit.
Thank you. Anne Greider.
Good evening. My name is Anne Greider, and I have lived for twenty-four years at eight zero eight Northeast one eightyth Street. My house will be four hundred and fifty feet due south of the proposed tower. I will have to look at the whole one hundred and fifty-foot tower from my kitchen when I'm doing dishes, from my dining room when I'm eating my supper, from the living room and from the bedroom. Gary Beggs, the landowner that's benefiting monetarily from the tower, will only see the base of the tower if that, because he also has a barn that's going to be blocking the base. His house is so close to the tower that he won't see the whole extension. As we and all of the surrounding property owners have expressed in our petition of protest, we do not want this tower. I would respectfully ask that you are duly elected representatives. Vote no. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Derek, looks like they see.
Derek Basie, eighteen two oh six Marcus Road. I oppose the tower that been in the backyard, and I hope you all would vote for no on this. This would be an eyesore. And it's just, I, I, these other people talk about being close to the water tower. It'd be a much better spot for it. I would like you all to consider to vote no on this.
Patrick Irwin.
Patrick Irwin, five six zero seven West one hundred and thirtieth Street, Owen Park, Kansas. I'm the applicant for this proposition before you. One of the first things I want to point out is that this, the purpose, the entire purpose of this structure is to provide reliable first net service and also AT&T service for the area. For those of you that aren't aware, FirstNet is an all, a broad, high-speed broadband network for first responders. They're utilized nationwide. We recently saw this with the, it got called into action during the Amtrak collapse. Amtrak rollover in Sheridan County just a few months ago is widely used there. We do meet all the requirements in the, in chapter four hundred of the Smithville Code. Most specifically, we're asking for one hundred and fifty feet in height, as the previous people have mentioned. We are one hundred and ninety-eight foot setback from the property lines. We've submitted the requisite engineer's fall zone letter. We've also submitted to you a letter of intent stating that we intend to allow additional users onto the tower when the, when the need arises. So for those reasons, we have met every, all the parts of chapter four hundred. The second criteria of a conditional use permit, as you know, is to promote the welfare and the general convenience of the public. I believe we have met that as well with the, it is a value to the public for reliable service. Many, many homeowners don't have landlines anymore. They utilize their mobile phones for nine-one-one. Furthermore, the first net services that I mentioned previously. The conditional use permit also will not cause any substantial injury to values of the property. That is, that is true. That is a requirement, and we have submitted convincing evidence to this. We had, we have an appraiser, submit a licensed appraiser and expert in the field of appraising property values. His conclusions are that it will not substantially injure the value of adjacent properties. He did a paired sale analysis of comparative sales. I hear a lot of conjecture that it's going to hurt property values. It's going to hurt them. We have hard evidence of actual sale prices next to towers, not next to towers. There's no difference. That, that study has been submitted to you guys as well. Additionally, one of the, one of the earlier speakers talked about the size and how it will dominate the neighborhood, and that is, that is too a condition of it. We contend that with the existence of the existing guide tower that is on the property, which we, the landowner, Mr. Beggs, who owns it, he estimates it to be around a hundred and twenty, maybe a hundred and twenty-five feet. We don't know what the appurtenances on there exactly. We haven't dropped a tape measure from it. But it will, it coincides with
That's your time. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Thornton.
Larry Thornton, nine oh six Northeast one hundred and eightieth. I'm one of the people with a joint driveway, and I am opposed to it.
Thank you. Gary Beggs.
Gary Beggs, nine oh four Northeast one hundred and eightyth Street. I think all of you have had enough information to come to your own conclusions. I believe that it's my right to have this. It's a conditional use. It's all well within the laws of the city. So I don't really have too much more to say other than nobody's come and talked to me about it from you all. So if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be glad to give an answer to those.
Thank you. Rochelle Alsberry.
Rochelle Alsberry, nine oh two Northeast one hundred and eightyth Terrace. For all you first responders, kudos. I have one. This ATT FirstNet, it was a big push from Tillman. And since it's a subscription service that most people have to buy into, is the city going to provide that for our fire department, for our police department here in Smithville? My son already has it. So it's in the event of a catastrophe. I don't know that it has anything to do with call time. I don't know the answer to that. The existing tower, they just mentioned that it was a hundred and twenty feet. Isn't there some stipulation that there can't be two towers over ninety feet on this property or within a certain perimeter of land? Welfare of the public, he mentioned. We are the public. It doesn't benefit us. It does not to our welfare. Eric Craig is one of the biggest real estate here in Smithville. Was he on this appraisal that they had done? No. Was he asked? I don't know. Can we ask him? He knows Smithville. It's a different market right now. Now I'm going to go to a more personal level. Now I'm gonna go to a more personal level. For you guys, you're a home purchaser and it's one of the biggest investments that you guys can make in your lifetime. As a home buyer, you have narrowed it down to two houses. One has overhead high voltage wires. One does not. Which house do you choose? They're identical. Price, everything identical. Nothing changed. Which one do you choose? Now consider those overhead lines or a hundred and fifty foot tower, five hundred feet out of a window. One house has it, one house doesn't. Same identical homes. Which house are you guys gonna buy? Now, as a current homeowner, you find out that this tower is going in five hundred feet from your back window. Do you want it? With no obstructions, there's no view, I will see it. I'm gonna close with, if you answer no to find this tower, or if you can hesitate with your answer, please vote no against this. If you chose the house with the overhead wires, then vote for it. If you chose the house without the overhead wires, please vote against it. If you chose the house without the cell phone tower, please vote against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will open it to board discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Um, the planning and zoning commission recommendation, how did that turn out?
Uh, finding facts are in the packet. Jack, do you wanna go into that a little bit or have John go?
The.
John Reddick, please step to the microphone, sir.
John Reddick, City Attorney. Uh, the planning and zoning, uh, commission, uh, has seven members to it. We had one recuse themselves. And so we ended up with having six that ultimately voted on this and it was tied three to three. Now, the applicant, uh, for something like this has the burden of carrying the day. So a three to three vote is the same as a recommendation of no. Uh, so when we looked at what they had done, we asked the planning zoning, uh, commission to go back and make specific findings that they're required to do under our code. And that's the findings and facts that you've seen here. So they went back and did that and they voted on each one of those things and so forth. Uh, and yet we didn't go back and revisit the ultimate vote because that was already taken the session before that. So this comes to you with a three-three vote, which has to be interpreted as a recommendation of no from the planning zoning commission. Uh, now, and I will, I will, we'll point out something else. We're gonna, we have letters of protest. So, uh, under our ordinance state statute and so forth, we have to have four votes this evening to approve the CUP. Okay, so, uh, under the, uh, planning and zoning ordinance of state statutes and so forth, we had the public hearing in front of the planning commission. And so, uh, uh, my understanding is the applicants provided documentation after that. So that was not available during the public hearing and you may or may not take that into consideration, one way or the other. So if I responded to your question. Thank you.
Mayor, I got a question. Just, it was brought up twice at the, a two-tower rule. Is that been established or determined if that's?
Hear from our attorneys. Development Director.
Yes, yes. Um, it is in the code as it relates to having them. Um, I've always understood it to mean that there had to be two conditional use permits for them. Um, one of them has been there for prior to conditional use permits, so.
I'm sorry, I can't respond. The first time I've heard about a second tower is tonight.
I think it wasn't mentioned in the videos I watched, right?
Yeah, all right.
Thank you. Yeah, Mayor, I, that, y- yes, Mayor, that was a clarification. That was the first that I'd heard about it tonight, too. So I, I guess from the applicant or i- i- I may not be able to ask this, but I'm just curious, i- is this two towers, then we would be in another tower put up? I thought it was to replace it.
Yeah, go ahead. You're the applicant. You can answer that.
Thank you. Um, my name's Patrick Irwin. Um, so we are not gonna replace it. This is gonna be an additional one. Um, I will, I will also, I'd like to caveat with what I'm saying, that it's, the existing tower there is not structurally sound to put the kind of antennas that we're gonna be putting on it. Additionally, Missouri State statute, um, over, uh, disallows the jurisdiction to consider, the proximity or the availability of another tower within the area under Missouri State statute sixty-seven dot five oh nine four subsection two.
Okay, thank you. I know one person did mention, uh, asking Eric Craig, because he does sell a lot of real estate. I did ask him, because I saw him the other day. Uh, he said it's never impacted a selling that he's ever had. So, um, that was a question I had, too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, as far as the, somebody asking if the city's making money on this, we don't, this is not a, this is private property, correct, Jack? There's no, this is all private property. There is no, we're not leasing anything to anybody, right? Yeah. Yeah. So we have the applicant questions.
Mayor, I have another question that maybe.
Go ahead, Alderman Hartman.
Chief of Police can answer. It was mentioned, um, in the public testimony about FirstNet. Um, eh, do we, do we have that accessibility with other towers in the city of Smithville?
At one point of clarification, I will make, the fire department is not a city entity. It's a fire district. We only have police services for the city. So it does only pertain to, to police for us. Ambulance and fires both their own districts.
The police department itself doesn't subscribe to FirstNet. Um, there are other versions of the same type system from carrier to carrier. Um, but the FirstNet system, uh, isn't, isn't, so we're not associated with it, uh, nor do we use it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
But that doesn't mean other entities might not. Yeah, I mean, because we don't know what the fire, yeah, yeah.
That doesn't mean I don't have officers on my department that don't subscribe to, through their personal accounts. Uh, most carriers do allow verified, uh, first responders, uh, to subscribe their personal accounts to those type, type of services. Our city phones aren't associated with the FirstNet system.
Thank you. That helps.
Question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One of the things you brought up is the, the access road should be maintained as part of the contract. Is it a gravel road right now?
Yes.
And whoever builds it, the contractor just needs to keep it as a gravel road?
Yeah, one of the things that, uh, was in the recommendations for planning and zoning is making sure that the approach met current code, which is concrete entrance. But yeah, the rest of the road is gravel. And then we did mention that in there as well. Uh, the other question was on the tree. That wasn't the recommendations as well from planning and zoning to make it visually appear like that. Did the applicant have a information on that, too? Or Jack?
I was gonna address the, um, access issue. Um, so we, as part of our agreement with, uh, the, Mr. Beggs, we, we've agreed to repair any damage that may ever be caused for the life of the structure. Um, in, anything that happens on it, we're responsible for it on our end. Um, yes, I hope that answered your question.
Do you have a?
Yes, go ahead.
So you may be able to answer this. I don't know, because I'm not sure which one had the question, but say, one of the big trucks is coming down and he's trying to come the other way. Is there a way to white, like, how are they gonna act? Who's gonna have to back all the way out to let the other one go if it's not safe, turn around?
Um, and actually, this actually happened to me this afternoon when I was out there. Um, so there's two other houses that share the access. Um, keep in mind, this, the other user, the Mr. Beggs owns the property under the road and fee simple. The other accesses on it are done by easement, but, um, that doesn't really answer your question. Um, so the, the road is very narrow. It is. Um, and we'll, we'll have to work around it and we will have to, uh, coordinate with landowners, uh, with our comings and goings. Construction is only gonna last about four weeks. Um, and it's not every single day. It's at very sporadic times and we can coordinate those, uh, during that time. Um, I, and this exact issue happened with me today. Uh, another vehicle was coming in as I was pulling out and there was enough room for two vehicles. Yeah, you have to drive off one tire off the gravel, but it worked just fine and was safely managed.
Yeah, I mean, if you have three houses on there, there probably have been times where other homeowners have to get in and out. Understood. That's probably why we don't share, allow shared driveways anymore, right, Jack? Anyway.
Mayor, I have just something to say here. I know that, uh, a couple of years ago, um, we were searching for a house in, in Texas, Oklahoma, Kansas, Missouri, and, uh, uh, by the power of God, we ended up here in lovely Smithville. So thanks and thankful for that. But, um, one of the houses that was very beautiful kept coming up and the price kept dropping. And the reason why is beautiful house, when you saw the overhead, uh, from above, it had a tower right in, right in the yard. And it was, uh, for us, at least, it was no, no way compared to the other ones. And I saw the house continue to drop. So I don't know, um, how, um, the value holds up. I know that for us personally, uh, that was not the right, uh, house when we had others available. I'm just a personal experience.
Any other discussion?
Got one last one, if I could.
Yep, go ahead.
I, I've heard the negativity of why we don't want it in our backyard or our area, and I understand that. Uh, with the exception of the, the law enforcement and the first responder, uh, user not, how many people will benefit from a tower?
Yeah, I've had, I've actually had quite a few text calls and emails from people that say the service there is not good. But, um, again, I mean, what's the capacity of a new tower, user-wise?
Hundreds.
Yeah.
At any given time.
Because in most of these, most of these decisions to develop a new areas are driven by people complaining about drop calls, right? This isn't just you randomly go around and try to put towers and they won't be servicing people. Hmm? Yeah, what's the distance on coverage for, I know, I know the higher band stuff now is more limited distance, right?
Correct. Um, so it's, it's not completely circular. It's, it, in some areas, it's, it's longer. In some areas, it's, it's more narrow. I would could say it could go from anywhere from three miles to seven miles. I can tell you the nearest adjacent tower that AT&T has is the water tank right across from the library. But AT&T is all for going on water tanks when they work. The water tank just south is too far south. We needed to be at that area. Did I answer your question about?
Yeah.
I think so.
Sorry.
Yeah.
With the location.
Because you had a question on the water tower.
Yeah, we have questions on the water tower. I mean, that's, that's necessary information to know.
Right.
That would have been probably great to say earlier, too. Yeah.
In time.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Going ones. Public comment, public comments over, so we can, yeah, thank you. Um, clerk, please, Carl.
Alderman Yulidell.
Yes.
Alderman Hartman.
No.
Alderman Russell.
No.
Alderman Kibelski.
Yes, hi.
Alderman Atkins.
No.
Three, two.
Motion fails. Next item on the agenda, public comment. So we got a lot of that out of the way. Do we have any other cards? Okay, any new business?
Hey, Mayor.
Yes.
I have a new business. Uh, first of all, I noticed that, um, we had this flyer up here for us to look at on the, on the Founder's Day celebration on, from the Smithville Historical Society. And, uh, also, um, I know that, uh, uh, Cynthia earlier discussed the, uh, changing of, of, uh, the park name to, uh, Humphrey and, uh, Nancy, um, Smith. So I think that's great. And also I'd like to see about, uh, if we could get a motion to have maybe a day of, of, uh, uh, a day maybe to close the city down, do something in the, in the city, uh, have a celebration or something every year. Um, as we go forward, um, for the founding of Smithville or in the, in Founder's Day, actually Founder's Day for the city.
Okay. Check with the Historic Society to see what dates they're usually doing that and see how that lines up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other new business? No? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Stand adjourned. Thank you.